President McQuinn, it is 7:01 and the live stream is rolling.
Thank you so much. Ms. Merritt?
Good evening to our PCCS school community. It is with the deepest sadness that we report the unexpected death of one of our Salem High School students this evening, last evening. Our thoughts are with the grieving family during this difficult time, and we, as a district family, will continue to wrap our arms of support around our students, our staff, our community members, and the family that has been impacted by this loss. As we grieve this loss, I will ask that you join me for a moment of silence for the family. Thank you. We have deployed our district crisis teams to offer their support and have encouraged students and staff to engage with crisis team personnel if they feel the need to talk to anyone during the coming days and weeks. We shared this information with our PCEP families and staff in a message that was sent earlier today, including resources for students and families and staff that can be found as a part of that letter as well as on our website. We will continue to move forward together as a school community and once again continue to wrap our support around our students, staff, and all community members that have been impacted by this terrible loss. Thank you, President McQuinn.
Thank you. I would like to say welcome to the people who are joining us this evening. This is our regular board meeting. I am Patty McQuinn. I would like to ask my fellow board members to please just introduce themselves, starting, we will start with Doug Brooks, then Lauren Christensen, Patrick Kehoe, Anupam Sudhu, and Sean Wilson. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Doug Brooks.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Lauren Christensen. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Patrick Kehoe.
Good evening. This is Anupam Chirukshudu.
Good evening. I'm Sean Wilson.
Thank you. Ms. Merritt, would you like to introduce yourself and your staff, please?
Good evening. I'd like to introduce my assistant, Ms. Diane Robertson, and thank her for taking the minutes. I'd ask the remaining members of the staff to introduce themselves to you, beginning with Mr. Brandon.
Good evening. Nick Brandon, Executive Director of Communications and Marketing. Thanks for joining tonight.
Hi, I'm Debbie Piaz. I'm the Chief Finance and Operations Officer. Welcome.
Good evening. Liz Vartanian Gibbs, Assistant Superintendent Human Resources. Welcome.
Good evening. Kurt Tiskowitz, Executive Director of Student Services. Thanks for joining us tonight.
Good evening. Beth Rail, Chief Academic Officer.
Good evening. Heather Fitch-Patrick, President, Education Association.
Okay, Sean Wilson will be leading us in the pledge. If we will all rise.
Yep. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we are on to our letter A, which is adoption of agenda, approval of consent agenda. In response to the tragedy in the district, we are going to be, I'm asking that we are going to, we could cut our agenda down to only include items that are necessary for the operation of the district. So I would, I am proposing that we do our consent agenda, superintendent's report, the action item, and the two, the two action items and citizens' comment. So I would like to have a motion that would allow us to amend our agenda.
Madam President, I move that we agenda, our agenda as described.
Okay. Okay, so it has been moved by member Kehoe and seconded by member Brooks that we amend our agenda and we adopt it as has been described. That would be action item 2102-50. Can we get a roll call vote, please, Mr. Brooks?
Yes. First member, member Kehoe.
Yes.
Member McQuinn.
Yes.
Member Sudhu.
Yes.
Member Wilson.
Yes.
I vote yes. Member Christensen.
All right.
Six zero.
Thank you. So do we need to adapt the agenda at this point? Or was that it?
Think we have to adopt it.
Okay. So now I'm looking for a motion to adopt the agenda. It is action item 2102-47.
Madam President, I move that we adopt the agenda as amended action item 2102-47.
Okay, I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you. It was moved by member Kehoe and seconded by member Brooks that we adopt our agenda, approval of the consent agenda, adopt our agenda as amended, action item 2102-47. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Member McQuinn?
Yes.
Members Sudhu?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
I vote yes. Member Christensen?
Yes.
Member Kehoe?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
I'm sorry, we did this out of order, but we'll just move on. Can you take us through the agenda, please?
Yes, this consent agenda this evening consists of new hires, resignations, our regular meeting minutes from February 9th, 2021. We had final reading of policies 2266, that's non-discrimination on the basis of sex and education programs or activities. Policy 24110, prohibition of referral or assistance. Policy 2414, reproductive health and family planning. Policy 5517.02, sexual violence rescind delete. Policy 7440.01, video surveillance, and policy 8450.05, emergency telecommuting policy, ETP.
Thank you so much. Dr. Vartanian Gibbs?
Good evening. Thank you, President McQuinn. This evening, I would like to introduce you to five new teachers in our district. The first teacher I would like to introduce you to is Audrey Dorman. Audrey is going to be an art teacher at the elementary level. Audrey will be teaching at Bentley and Dotson School. She comes to us with a bachelor's degree from Eastern Michigan University, as well as one year of experience from airport schools. Audrey, welcome. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Next, I would like to introduce you to Justin Logginess. Justin will be teaching English at Salem High School. Justin comes to us with a bachelor's degree from Eastern Michigan University, as well as three years of experience. Welcome, Justin.
Thank you. It'll be a pleasure to work for the district.
Next, I would like to introduce you to Jordan Medugel. Jordan will be an elementary art teacher at Workman and Tonda School. She comes to us with a bachelor's degree from Eastern Michigan University. Welcome, Jordan.
Hi, thank you.
Next, I would like to introduce you to Rachel Palajak. Rachel will be teaching music. She's going to be teaching band and choir at Pioneer Middle School. She comes to us with a bachelor's degree from Central Michigan University, a master's degree from the University of Michigan, in over nine years of experience. Welcome, Rachel.
Thank you.
Next, I would like to introduce you to Molly Pamal. Excuse me, it's Pamille. She is going to be a new research room teacher at Hoben School and Tonda School. Molly just graduated with her bachelor's degree from Concordia College. Welcome, Molly.
Thank you.
So welcome to our five new teachers. Congratulations. We know you will be champions for our students and support all of our students with teaching and learning and social emotional needs. Thank you. Welcome.
All right. Thank you so much. Welcome to the district. We are now down to D1 superintendent's report.
All right. Thank you, President McQuinn. I just wanted to give a brief update on our return to school plans for March 1st. The last time that we were together on Thursday, you approved our reconfirmation plan that will allow the return of our students to full in-person learning for K through eight, as well as our Starkweather students on March 1st, and our high school students through the hybrid plan. Just wanted to reinforce the last time I talked about one school that still had five sections that were not able to achieve the three feet. We have taken ownership of the furniture that we had discussed that will allow and now actually has allowed that school to achieve the minimum of three feet of physical distancing within the instructional space. So at this point, we have all of our schools and able to achieve that three feet of instruct, in our instructional spaces, as well as our lunchrooms for K8. We are prepared to move forward at this time with March 1st, and we are looking forward to welcoming our students back. As you've seen, we've posted positions for our lunch supervisory positions. We are still hiring full-time, as well as we have had an abundance of responses from our community through our substitute plan. And so we have multiple family members that have stepped up. They're going to assist within their own buildings, and that's a pleasure. And so we will have those supervisory positions covered. And I just want to give you the assurance that we are ready on March 1st, on Monday, to implement our plan to return our students back to in-person learning. Are there any questions at this time?
Just to make sure that we're clear, Ms. Merritt, we, the plan is full-time, five days a week for elementary, full-time, four days a week, with Wednesday being virtual for the middle school to align with the high school schedule for virtual education. And then our high schools are meeting in the mornings on, with split cohorts on Monday and Tuesday and Thursday and Friday.
That is correct. And Wednesdays are a full day of remote live instruction at both the middle schools and the high schools. And all afternoon classes are live remote instruction at the high school. So that will be five days a week that there will be live instruction.
Great. And our Starkweather Academy High School is actually full-time in person, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Did anybody else have any questions? Clarifications? Okay. So then we will move on to our action item 2102-48, which is consider approval of a resolution to purchase secondary picnic tables. First and final reading. Did somebody want to give us some explanation for that before we vote?
I can certainly do that. As discussed in our FNO meeting last Thursday on the 18th, one of our mitigation strategies in order to accommodate physical distancing, once the weather permits, would be to have students eat lunch outside in the secondary level. And as you know, there is a public bid threshold that is given annually by the Department of Education. This year is 25,288. That issue is issued and scaled for CPI indices every year. So this has to come to the Board of Education for approval. Based on board policies also with purchasing, we're going to use our SRT2 funds or federal funds that are coming to us in the near future. Those guidelines are still being developed in final form, but this will cover those purchases. So we're going to use those federal funds to do so. We went out and got three quotes, even though not, not necessary, because we're using a competitive or cooperative bid, which is allowable under board policy as well. And so Mr. Tim Grzinski was able to get some bids from school specialty, American Athletic, and then Lowe's as well. As you see, there's an eight-week leadway time under delivery. And so we're asking you to do this first and final this evening in order to purchase those or to put a purchase order forward in order to get those on or about April 15th. Hopefully, the weather will be warm enough, just like it was today, to sit outside. But the price we're asking, or we're asking you to recommend is $111,582. I don't know if either member Kehoe or Mr. Grzinski has any other comments. This is 116 regular tables and nine ADA tables at all five middle schools and all four high schools.
So we discussed these things at the FNO meeting, and we discussed the potential of being able to purchase these things at retail. In other words, to get them faster. And with the quantities that we're purchasing, that would not be possible for us to do. So we're working forward with, with this process, and we want to bring this forward as a first and final with the hope that maybe we can exceed that delivery timeframe.
Does anybody have any questions about this? All right, I am looking for a motion for action item 2102-48, consider approval of a resolution for just secondary tables, first and final.
Madam President, I move that we approve a purchase picnic tables for secondary schools, first and final reading, action item 2102-48.
Thank you so much. Can I get a second for that?
Second.
All right, it's been moved by member Kehoe and seconded by members to do that we consider approval of a resolution to purchase secondary picnic tables, first and final reading, action item 2102-48. Can you take us through a vote, please, Mr. Brooks?
Yes. Members Sudhu?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
I vote yes. Member Christensen?
Yes.
Member Kehoe?
Yes.
Member McQuinn?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
All right. Thank you so much. We are now on to letter E, which is citizens' comments. Before we begin, just to remind the public that the board recognizes the public's ability to make comments during the board's allotted public comment period at each board meeting. However, speakers should take into account the rules of common courtesy and refrain from making personal attacks against employees, students, parents, community members, or members of the board. Further, school district employees and board members have the right to request a closed session pursuant to section 8A of the Open Meetings Act if a member of the public has a complaint against an employee or a board member. We will also be requiring that all comments include a full name and address as outlined in Board Policy 167.3. And tonight, some members of Ms. Merritt's team have agreed to read the comments. So whichever one of you wanted to go first and start, feel free.
Thank you, President McQuinn. Our first comment is from Emily Florence. Initially, I was going to address the board tonight about the ridiculousness of the excuse you have been using about lunch being the holdup in the return to school. You knew the situation when you gave us an initial safe start date of October 4th. So you lied to us at that time, knowing full well you had no intention of returning in a timely manner, as there was no plan. You could have shortened lunch periods and added a fourth. You could have had the students eat in the classrooms. You could have used the gymnasiums, but you didn't. You continue to push the date to return out, messing with lives of district families. Wake up. We have numerous students in therapy, on medication, in the hospital, and dying. They are killing themselves. Kids are resilient, but this has gone on far too long. They see no end in sight, no hope, no normalcy. They are isolated behind a screen with minimal exposure to others. There should be no kid left behind a screen. They need to be in class full-time immediately. You claim to follow the science, so let me give you some science from the National Council for Mental Health. Perhaps these statistics will assist you in better understanding what mental health and substance use challenges look like in 2020. So please really focus and listen to these tonight. One, in late June, 40% of US adults reported struggling with mental health or substance use. Two, one in six US youth aged six through 17 experience a mental health disorder each year. Three, half of all lifetime mental illness begins by age 14 and 75% by age 24. Four, depression alone costs the nation about $210.5 billion annually. Five, the average delay between onset of mental illness symptoms and treatment is 11 years. Six, suicide is the second leading cause of death among people aged 10 through 34 in the US and the 10th leading cause of death in the US. And guess what? COVID isn't leading, isn't the leading cause. It's not even close. Seven, many people suffer from more than one mental disorder at a given time. In particular, depressive illnesses tend to co-occur with substance abuse and anxiety disorders. Eight, more than 70% of youth in the juvenile justice system have a diagnosed mental illness. Nine, the most common mental illness in the US are anxiety disorders, which affect 40 million adults, 18.1% of the population. We have not even begun to see the ramifications of this situation on our youth, but by examining the stats, we are very likely on a path to destruction that will last for years. The numbers are growing exponentially, and you are contributing to it locally. Stop hiding behind the COVID curtain of fear and get our kids back into school immediately. Their lives depend on it, literally. End of comment.
The next comment is from Christine Hughes. What is going, what is it going to take piece up? How long will you continue to drag your feet and ignore the true needs of our children? A boy, a teenage boy, a member of our PCCS family, took his own life yesterday. The mental health epidemic is in your hands. His mother was an advocate for mental health and was fighting for him each and every day to return to school. He wanted to return to life and to see his friends. Some groups feel it is not safe to return to the classroom. They all need to understand that it is no longer safe to force these children to stay home and stay virtual. We all pray that his family can find the strength to overcome this devastating loss. Reports of teachers refusing to come into the classroom on March 1st are circulating. The district will have to hire subs to come in and watch the students while they sit in the classrooms and they zoom in on their Chromebooks. This is unacceptable. We all trusted that governor, CDC, MDHS, medical community, all the experts, and the science when they said to shut down the schools and nonessential businesses, but you don't trust those same voices who are now advocating to open them back up and saying it's safe to go back to school. Instead, you are going to follow the fear and your personal opinions? There is no proof that in-person instruction is safe all around. Did the LPS teachers and staff accuse the community of wanting to harm them and that they wanted, and that they weren't concerned for their safety when their schools reopened? No. Did they go back full-time safely? Yes. Ask all the private and charter school teachers who are in the classrooms all around us if they feel safe. It has been proven safe. Time to go back to school and educate our children in person, in a classroom, and not via Zoom. The damage done to the children as a result of the school shutdowns is far greater than the perceived risk of returning to the classroom. If your profession is to educate others, you should first educate yourself to make decisions based on facts and fear, and not fears. Save our children. End of comment.
The next comment is from Tyler Barnett. Dear Ms. Merritt and BOE, my name is Tyler Barnett, and I am a ninth grader at Salem High School. I know my mom has emailed you regarding how much I miss going to school full-time, but since you don't seem to be listening to parents, maybe you'll listen to students. After having my eighth grade year cut short last year, I was very nervous and excited to start at Salem in the fall. My older brother graduated from Salem in 2019, so I knew all the exciting things to look forward to and some of the scary things. The fall of 2020 was hard starting high school, already not knowing anyone, but also remotely, just didn't seem right and was really hard. At first, I was good about getting up and online, but after a few months, it was really boring and hard to learn. I was disappointed in my grades, since in middle school I did really good. I didn't fail, but my grades could have been better. Since I wasn't failing, no teachers really reached out to see if I needed extra help, and it's hard to ask a teacher you've never seen for help. As a freshman, I didn't get to experience homecoming or football games with my friends. During that first semester, my parents kept saying maybe we should switch to another school, but I didn't want to. In January, me and my friends were so excited when we heard we would be going back two full days. Then in February, everybody, everyone would be back. Finally, I'd see my friends at school, even if it was only walking past each other or at lunch. It felt so good to get out of my house and be in an actual classroom, even if only two days, but I thought it was temporary, and in February, everyone, everyone would be back. All over the news, teachers are getting the vaccine and COVID numbers are going down. But then in early February, my mom told me after midwinter break, I wasn't going back to school full face-to-face, as was planned. This made me so sad. My friends and I were all mad and couldn't understand why we couldn't go back. All of us kids have been following the rules at school and sacrificed lots of activities to stay safe. I was already sad, mad, and disappointed. Then I found out we were only going back, going to go back half-days in March for two days each week, less than we had before, and we were going to have to get up an hour earlier. This just isn't right and doesn't make sense to any of the students and the teachers. No one is asking us what we want to do. It feels like you do not care about our mental well-being. My parents have talked about moving me to another school in the fall, and things don't change, and I think they are right. I want the leaders to care about me. So now it has been almost a year that I've not been in school full-time. Most days, I just go through the motions. My dad lost his job. My brother can't do online college, and my mom works at home. We are all so frustrated and want things to be back to normal. I want to be in school, eat lunch with my friends, watch my friends' sports games. It's boring and lonely being home all the time and doing school online. They only, they only playing video games with my friends. They're only playing video games with my friends. Please think about the students when you make these decisions. We are sad and want to be in school full-time. We need to see our friends and teachers. Mostly, I feel bad for the seniors I know. Their last year of school has been all remote, and they've missed all the-
Brandon, we've reached the three-minute limit with this comment.
Thank you.
The next comment is from M. Hammond. Thank you to the PCCS board and Ms. Merritt for guiding our children back to school. Our family appreciates the efforts you have made to make sure these kids get back safely. We know that you cannot make everyone happy, so we are glad you are focusing on what is best for students. Thank you for making the tough choices in an unprecedented time. End of comment.
The next comment is from Michael Wheaton. A young light has been extinguished. A boy, a teenage boy, a member of our PCCS family, took his own life yesterday. His mother was an advocate for mental health and was fighting for him each and every day to return to school. He wanted to return to life and to see his friends. Some groups feel it is not safe to return to the classroom. They all need to understand that it is no longer safe to force these children to stay home and stay virtual. We pray that his family can find the strength to overcome this devastating loss. Reports of teachers refusing to come in the classroom on March 1st are circulating. The district will have to hire subs to come in and watch the kids sit in the classroom while they zoom in on their Chromebooks. This is unacceptable. Meanwhile, at least one board member believes we need to vaccinate not only the teachers and staff, but students of all ages as well, before we can return to face-to-face learning for all. Not only is there no scientific basis for this position, it means there is no light visible at the end of the long, long tunnel that these kids are in right now. How many more lives are you willing to sacrifice by maintaining this ludicrous stance? How can you live with yourselves when this is all over? When will you follow the actual science and data and abandon the toxic politics and fan service to special interests? End of comment.
The next comment is from Robert McCurdy. Last evening, a light in our community suddenly went dark. A young child is gone way too soon. I did not know this young man or his family, but I feel compelled to speak out before another young man or woman loses hope. Like it or not, agree with it or not, the Board of Education and Ms. Merritt share some responsibility in the tragic loss of this PCCS student. You and you alone, with your dithering mixed messages and lack of leadership, have placed, played games with our children's lives. You promised them school, and they recanted. You promised again only to pull the rug out from under them. You have allowed one light to sadly go dark, and we as a community can no longer sit by idly, sit idly by while we see another light start to dim. At this point, there is no viable future for this board. You have lost faith and trust in the people you serve, our children. Tonight, I am calling on the entire Board of Education- Tonight I am calling on the entire Board of Education and Superintendent Monica Merritt to resign effective immediately. Only arrogance and stubbornness would stand in the way of you doing the right thing for our children. They deserve new leadership. Leadership who will advocate for them first and foremost. In closing tonight, please hug your child if you have one because there is a family hurting in our community who can no longer do the same to theirs. Sleep on my request in the morning and do the respectable thing and step aside.
The next comment is from Amanda Richardson. A young light has been extinguished. A boy, a teenage boy, a member of our PCCS family took his own life yesterday. His mother was an advocate for mental health and was fighting for him each and every day to return to school. He wanted to return to life and to see his friends. Some groups feel it is not safe to return to the classroom. They all need to understand that it is no longer safe to force these children to stay home and stay virtual. We all pray that his family can find the strength to overcome this devastating loss. Reports of teachers refusing to come into the classroom on March first are circulating. The district will have to hire subs to come in and watch the students while they sit in the classroom and they zoom in on their Chromebooks. This is unacceptable. We all trusted the governor, CDC, MDHHS, medical community, all the experts and the science when they said to shut down the schools and non-essential businesses, but you don't trust those same voices who are now advocating to open them back up and saying it's safe to go back to school? Instead, you're going to follow the fear and your personal opinions? There is proof that the, that in-person instruction is safe all around us. Did the LPS teachers and staff accuse the community of wanting to harm them? And that they weren't concerned for their safety when the schools reopened? No. Did they go back to full-time safely? Yes. Ask all the private and charter school teachers who are in the classrooms all around us if they feel safe. It has been proven safe. Time to go back to school and educate our children in person in a classroom and not via Zoom. The damage done to the children as a result of school shutdowns is far greater than the perceived risk of returning to the classroom. If your profession is to educate others, you should first educate yourself to make decisions based on facts and not fears. End of comment.
Next comment is from Deborah Amos. We have been a member of this community for over twenty years. We have pulled one child from PCCS this August due to the lack of in-person learning and no opportunity to learn, prepare or thrive. We have one child remaining and are seriously considering moving him as well. As you are not meeting his academic, social, emotional or physical needs, you have failed. You should be ashamed of your actions as they do have, do, I'm sorry. You should be ashamed of your actions as they have, do have significant impact and severe consequences on our children. As we have most recently experienced, there is no learning, no preparing, no thriving in the current or proposed learning environment that has taken over twelve months to prepare. You have failed. There should be no kid left behind a screen. They need to be in class full-time immediately. You claim to follow the science, so let me give you some science from the National Council for Mental Health. Perhaps these statistics will assist you in better understanding what mental health and substance abuse challenges look like in 2020. So please really focus and listen to these tonight. Number one, in late June, forty percent of adults reported struggling with mental health or substance abuse. Number two, one in six US youth aged six to sixteen experienced a mental health disorder each year. Number three, half of all lifetime mental illness begins by the age of fourteen and seventy-five percent by the age of twenty-four. Number four, depression alone costs the nation about two hundred and ten point five billion annually. The average, number five, the average delay between onset of mental illness symptoms and treatment is eleven years. Number six, suicide is the second leading cause of death among people aged ten to thirty-four in the US and the tenth leading cause of death in the US. And guess what? Covid isn't the leading cause. It's not even close. Number seven, many people suffer from more than one mental disorder at a time. In particular, depressive illnesses tend to co-occur with substance abuse and anxiety disorders. Number eight, more than seventy percent of youth in the juvenile justice system have a diagnosed mental illness. Number nine, the most common mental illness in the US are anxiety disorders which affect forty million adults, eighteen point one percent of the population. We have not even begun to see the ramifications of this situation on our youth, but by examining the stats, we are very likely on a path of destruction that will last for years. The numbers are growing exponentially and you are contributing to it locally. Stop hiding behind the Covid curtain of fear and get our kids back to school immediately. Their lives depend on it, literally. End of comment.
The next comment is from Patricia DiSanto. Enough is enough. Why are we sending our students back to school on Monday when they will only be watching on their screens while in the classroom? That is the dumbest thing I've heard in a long time. Enough is enough. Teachers need to teach in person. Enough is enough. End of comment.
The next comment does not refer to a manner in which the employee or the board or the board member carries out, uh, his or her duties and it will not be read.
The next comment is from Anastasia Sacakini. I am one of the district's cheerleaders and moved to Canton for the school system alone. I can no longer hang on by a thread with no action and meeting after meeting to accomplish nothing. Our schools haven't closed full-time for way longer than necessary. Virtual families who feel it's not safe to send their children to school have been given so many tools and options to accomplish their needs, but parents who need their children face-to-face have no voice or options. We are out of options. My young five child has bounced in and out of the program with the inconsistencies of the district. My third grader is doing okay and my fourth grader now sees a therapist and is on medication. How is that safe? We are tired of you reading our comments then pushing them to the side with generic answers and moving on to the next comment. We feel voiceless. We feel helpless. What are you going to do for all of the children that have lost a year? Do something, we beg you. End of comment.
The next comment is by Bradley Caola. I want to be in school full-time. I will eat in my classroom, in the hallways, anywhere. Please. End of comment.
The next comment is from Chris Cruspy. Why would the district spend almost two hundred thousand dollars on picnic tables that won't be available until mid-April? In all likelihood, these won't be needed in subsequent school years, so this seems to be a, this seems to be at best a two hundred thousand dollar spend for items that will be used for maybe two months on days when the weather is reasonable. I don't believe this shows that the board is being good stewards of the district's funds. End of comment.
Next comment is from Brian Brown. When will the board meet, when will the board be hosting in-person meetings? It is very easy to sit behind a Zoom call and avoid dealing with what needs to be done. Also, why is only one speaker shown on the video at a time? We should be able to view the entire board for the duration of the meeting. End of comment.
The next comment is from Christie Banners. I am writing to the PCCS Admin and Board of Education as the PCEA to express our fervent request that you follow the recommendations of the public health officials at the global, national, state and local level and get our high school students back to in-person school for more than six hours a week as soon as possible. I have copied leaders and elected officials as well. This is not getting the attention it should. I will spare you all the statistics and data you already have access to and are hopefully scouring regularly. Instead, I write to remind you that you were elected or hired to look out for the best interests of our children and their education. Their education has a much broader meaning than reading, writing and arithmetic, as any educator or parent knows well. Our teachers and support staff provide so much to our students and they do so with passion and purpose. But with the very extended time with no face-to-face instruction, twelve days less than a full year, no matter how hard they try, teachers cannot engage with, encourage, empower and teach our children from behind a screen the way they can in person and our kids are paying dearly. May I remind you in March 2020, the global, national, state and local public health agencies, medical experts and educational leaders all called for school to pause and then move to a fully remote learning for the remainder of the year. You followed their guidance and assured parents that you were acting in the children's best interest, and I believe you were. In March 2020, the medical world did not understand this new and terrifying virus and shutting down schools and many other organizations was absolutely necessary to ensure safety and survival. We absolutely need to respect this virus and treat it with caution. And most of us have become adept at living with precautions like masks and social distancing where appropriate. We have affected vaccines, numbers are falling and positives are not leading to the same level of hospitalizations or deaths. It's an entirely different situation than a year ago. Additionally, teenagers are not big spreaders and are not a big risk of becoming seriously ill with this virus. Now the same public health and medical experts at a global, national and local level that called for closing schools, when you listened and acted are now urgently calling for schools to be open for as much face-to-face learning as possible as soon as possible immediately. The risks to our children of not being in school are well documented to be much higher than the risks of Covid exposure or contraction if they are in school. This has been well documented around the world for many months. It has also been shown in local districts less than fifteen miles from here. Yet now when these experts call for schools to open for more face-to-face learning to serve our children's very real and very desperate needs, you refuse, you refuse the knowledge, you refuse to acknowledge their expertise, offer little to no transparency about why this is the case and repeatedly push the date out to bring the high schoolers back in person. And now when they are finally scheduled to return next week, you have decided to make it for two short half-days each week.
Excuse me, Mr. Brandon, we've reached the three-minute time limit for this comment.
Thank you.
Next comment is from Joe Abraham. The BOE needs to follow the science and send the high schools back to five full days. We are in the middle of a mental health epidemic and the kids need to be back in person. I would expect after eleven months that the administration and BOE would be able to re-image the high school campus. Please follow the science and get all of the students in person five full days if they want. There should be no more debate or no more delay. Also, we the people expect transparency. Why won't you respond to any emails? Why has the board president continued to vote no to go back? Why aren't we looking at the negative effects of being away from school? This remote learning is harming and the underprivileged and the learning disabled. We continue, or we expect compassion from the BOE. Please think about the pain and the anguish these kids are going through. If you truly have compassion, your plan will be five full days for all students and not two and a half days for the most vulnerable. We deserve better and expect better. End of comment.
The next comment is from Ben Deems. What will the board be doing to help the students of PCCS and their mental health after the tragic events that occurred to one of our fellow students? The email sent out today was very bleak and did not provide enough support. The email only said to talk to the counselors, but will the counselors address mental health and suicide awareness to the entire school? Or just those that come to talk to them? Because I know some students won't reach out to the counselors. People on social media are blaming his death on you, which may not be true. But what will you do to help the entire student body learn and address mental health and suicide awareness? End of comment.
Next comment is by Stephanie Campbell. Good evening. While I'm thrilled that my two elementary-age children are set to return to full face-to-face on Monday, I will advocate for all children in the district and I urge you to open the school doors for all PCCS students. We know, will no longer sit by and allow other adults to take any more away from our children. With that being said, there should be no kid left behind a screen. They need to be in class full-time immediately. You claim to follow the science, so let me give you some science from the National Council for Mental Health. Perhaps these statistics will help you better understand what mental health and substance abuse or substance use challenges look like in 2020. So please really focus and listen to these tonight. Number one, in late June, forty percent of the US adults reported struggling with mental health or substance use. Number two, one in six US youth aged six to sixteen experienced a mental health disorder each year. Three, half of all lifetime mental illness begins by the age of fourteen and seventy-five percent by the age twenty-four. Four, depression alone costs the nation about two hundred and ten point five billion annually. On the, number five, the average delay between onset of mental illness symptoms and treatment is eleven years. Six, suicide is the second leading cause of death among people aged ten to thirty-four in the US and tenth leading cause of death in the US. And guess what? Covid isn't the leading cause. It's not even close. Seven, many people suffer from more than one mental disorder at a given time. In particular, depressive illnesses tend to lead to, tend to co-occur with substance abuse and anxiety disorders. Eight, more than seventy percent of youth in the juvenile justice system have a diagnosed mental illness. Nine, the most common mental illnesses in the US are anxiety disorders, which affect forty million adults, eighteen point one percent of the population. We have not even begun to see the ramifications of the situation on our youth, but by examining the stats, we are very likely on a path to destruction that will last for years. The numbers are growing exponentially and you are contributing to it locally. Stop hiding behind the Covid curtain of fear and get our kids back into school immediately. Their lives depend on it, literally. End of comment.
The next comment is from Joanne Temple. There should be no kid left behind a screen. They need to be in class full-time immediately. You claim to follow the science, so let me give you some science from the National Council for Mental Health. Perhaps these statistics will assist you in better understanding what mental health and substance use challenges look like in 2020. So please really focus and listen to these tonight. One, in late June, forty percent of US adults reported struggling with mental health or substance use. Two, one in six US youth aged six through seventeen experienced a mental health disorder each year. Three, half of all lifetime mental illness begins by age fourteen and seventy-five percent by age twenty-four. Four, depression alone costs the nation about two hundred and ten point five billion dollars annually. Five, the average delay between onset of mental illness symptoms and treatment is eleven years. Six, suicide is the second leading cause of death among people aged ten through thirty-four in the US and the tenth leading cause of death in the US. And guess what? Covid isn't the leading cause. It's not even close. Seven, many people suffer from more than one mental disorder at a given time. In particular, depressive illnesses tend to co-occur with substance abuse and anxiety disorders. Eight, more than seventy percent of youth in the juvenile justice system have a diagnosed mental illness. Nine, the most common mental illness in the US are anxiety disorders, which affect forty million adults, eighteen point one percent of the population. We have not even begun to see the ramifications of this situation on our youth, but by examining the stats, we are very likely on a path to destruction that will last for years. Safe start students should return to full-time face-to-face learning as soon as teachers are offered their second dose of the vaccine. End of comment.
Next comment is from Dottie Stoltz. Take notice, there is a group of parents that will not silence and our numbers are increasing daily. We refuse to have our children left behind a screen. Not sure how you sleep at night knowing that our students are suffering. We won't stop fighting for our children's education and ultimately their lives. End of comment.
The next comment is from Bonnie Badola. This afternoon I picked up my ninth grader from PCEP after school and I wondered how long it will take until he will attend school for a full day again. Please share the metrics that you're using to determine whether the high school students can attend in person and whether they can attend for a full day. With the teachers vaccinated, the constraint being cited is that it is keeping students from attending a full day is that they cannot be adequately spaced at lunch. This physical constraint will not change in the fall and the students are not, students are not able to be spaced at lunch. I'm sorry. This physical constraint will not change in the fall and the students are not able to be vaccinated because the vaccines aren't approved for people under sixteen yet. Please share your specific plans for getting all the students back to school full-time in the fall because it sounds like that will not be a possibility. Families need to be able to plan for next year and if the students are going to be limited to half-days at PCEP for the foreseeable future, they deserve to know that and be able to make alternate, alternate plans if that is unacceptable to them. End of comment.
Next comment is from Nicole Milkie. Dear, or dear Board of Education, my heart is breaking tonight for that innocent child in our community whose life was cut short. How many more innocent children will this community have to lose before you realize the negative impact you are making on these children by repeatedly not allowing them to return immediately, full-time, face-to-face? I have a freshman that is also suffering and I will not stop advocating for her and all the other children out there that need to be back in school face-to-face until they are. End of comment.
The next comment is from Mary Smothers. I know that you have received many requests to consider a pass-fail option to PCCS students. Many neighboring districts are offering this choice to their students. Learning during a global pandemic takes great flexibility. Why is our district not finding and offering as many ways as possible to support all learners? Please consider offering a pass-fail option for our PCCS students. End of comment.
Next comment is from Jessica Hammond. Ms. Merritt and the BOE Teachers Union, MEA and anyone else standing in the way of getting all our kids back into school full-time. Last year and for a small chunk of this year, I've remained super positive and optimistic, but the positively I once had is completely depleted. Ms. Merritt and the BOE Teachers Union and you have completely failed our kids and our parents. My patience with the district is gone and I'm sick of waiting and I'm sick of being nice and politically correct. I politely emailed to voice concerns. I've shown support with other concerned parents at the board office. It falls on deaf ears. Surrounding districts, charters, private schools, Christian schools, Catholic schools, et cetera, et cetera. All these, these all must be a special breed of humans where they are able to thrive and remain healthy and happy while going full-time face-to-face. Why are these schools able to be back full-time face-to-face but our district can't? Please seriously answer me this. Please spare me if you are trying to bring up the size of our district or certain size, school sizes or other lame excuses. You are supposed to be a solution, to be solution providers. Right now you are doing the opposite of that. These numbers aren't going away. There are other schools of similar size throughout our country who have managed to get back face to face. We may be, we may be going back face to face on March first, but not all of our district is going back full time like they should be. The size of the high school or the lunch situation is not going away. We will be right in the same scenario when the next school year rolls around. Or will we be right in the same scenario when the next school year rolls around? I want answers to this. Open our schools. So far we have lost 25% of our district families. Ms. Merritt was on a record, on record for saying that she was aware. That families are leaving the district and that's okay. No, Ms. Merritt, it's not okay. This comment you made was the exact moment. My husband and I knew you were not working for our kids and our family. A mass exodus of families out of our district is not okay. I'm embarrassed for you that you would say something like this. I'm sure with PCCS being school of choice, you will hope, you will be hoping other families will want to come to school here. For what? The lack of education and flip flopping hybrid at best school schedules they will get? All you are doing is dangling a carrot in front of these kids' faces. Pushing back dates to get them back in school, changing plans. You are doing a marvelous job at broken promises and moving the finish line farther and farther away. Pat yourself on the back and be proud of that. Parents are struggling to continuously keep up with the changing schedules. The juggling of our work schedules so we can be home to educate our kids more. Keeping the mental state of our household is a challenge as well. The list goes on. Yesterday, another student in our district took his own life. Please pause and read that sentence over again slowly. Then please know it is your lack of action to get our kids back into school that leads us to this. The horrible decisions you are making to keep stalling is permanently changing people's lives for the worst. These are children. They cannot be seen beyond what is right in front of them. They do not have the ability to see the future.
We have reached the three minute time limit for this comment.
Thank you.
Our next comment is from Amanda McMahon. Please make the only priority ensuring face to face instruction for all who desire it. We need to give all kids in the community instructions so that the district can thrive. No one will move to the area if the district is not teaching the kids, but the nearby areas are. End of comment.
Next comments from Amanda Shinsky. What is it going to take for this board to listen to the community you are supposed to represent? We had several brave parents speak today on behalf because. On our behalf because we have tried for months for you to hear us and for it to fall on deaf ears. And receiving template responses from every single one of you. I can't even begin to tell you how insulting that is. You read the community, you read the community responses after you've already made up your mind and voted. You do not listen to us, so I pray tonight you hear this. A young light has been extinguished. A boy, a teenage boy, a member of our PCCS family took his own life yesterday. His mother was an advocate for mental health and was going and was fighting for him each and every day to return to school. He wanted to return to life and to see his friends. Some groups feel it is not safe to return to the classroom. They all need to understand this. That this is no longer safe to force these children to stay home and stay virtual. We all pray that his family can find the strength to overcome this devastating loss. Reports of teachers refusing to come into the classroom on March first are circulating. The district will have to hire subs to come in and watch the students. While they sit in the classroom and they zoom in on their Chromebooks. This is unacceptable. We all trusted the governor, CDC, MDHHS. Medical community, all the experts and the science. When they said to shut down the schools and non essential businesses. But you don't trust those same voices who are now advocating to open them back up. Saying it's safe to go back to school. Instead, you are going to follow the fear and your personal opinions. There is proof that in person instruction is safe all around us. Did the LPS teachers and staff accuse the community of wanting to harm them? And that they weren't concerned for their safety when their schools reopen? No. Did they go back full, back full time safely? Yes. Ask all the private and charter school teachers who are in the classrooms all around us if they feel safe. It has been proven safe. Time to go back to school and educate our children in person in a classroom and not via Zoom. The damage done to our children as a result of school shutdowns is far greater than the perceived risk of returning to the classroom. If your profession is to educate others, you should first educate yourself to make decisions based on facts and not fears. End of comment.
President McCoyn, that is the last of our citizens' comments.
Uh, thank you so very much. So now we are at. We have an action item 210249. It is, we need to. Designate a representative for Region Eight for a three year term to the MASP Board of Directors. So I, they had sent an email and I sent the biographies around to people. Does anybody have a name they would like to bring forward?
Yes, President McCoyn, if you could just give me one moment to. Pull up that booklet that was sent to us. I would like to recommend Sandra Dukey from Ferndale Public Schools.
All right, uh, did anybody else have, anybody else they would like to recommend? I'm hearing no other names. She was also my choice. She has an excellent, they are all good choices. But she seemed, she has had a career in public education. So. She seems like she would be an excellent choice to be a representative. So I am looking for a motion. For action item 210249, consider approval of designated a representative for Region Eight. For a three year term on the MASP Board of Directors, first and final reading. And our representative we will be voting for is Sandra Dukey.
Madam President. I move that we approve Sandra Dukey for. Our representative for the MASP Region Four Board of Directors, action item number 21 dash 02 dash 49.
Thank you. Can I get a second for that?
Second.
All right, it's been moved by members to do and seconded by Member Kehoe. That we consider approval of designating Sandra Dukey for our three year term on the MASP. Board of Directors, first and final reading, action item 210249. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, First Member Wilson?
Yes.
I vote yes. Member Christensen? Yes, Member Kehoe?
Yes.
Member McCoyn?
Yes.
Member Sedu?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Uh, thank you so much and Ms. Robertson will be sending in our vote for us, which we do appreciate. I'd also like to thank Mr. Tiskowitz and Mr. Brandon for reading the citizens' comments. As well as Ms. Merritt and her team who came out tonight. Uh, we have reached the end of our agenda, so we will be adjourning. It is 7:59. Thank you.